All right, I'd like to call to order the special town council meeting for Wednesday, October 12th. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mike Rilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinas.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swet.
Here.
Joe Wizewati.
Here.
David Westland.
Present.
Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item number three is a public hearing on ordinance number 1781 A, B, and C. There are budgets. Joe?
Did you want to do the proof of publications first?
I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Westland, are we in order for the proofs of publication?
I don't, do we have those?
There aren't proofs of publication. They just have to be uploaded into Gateway, which they were done so timely. You don't put them in the paper anymore.
Opening remarks.
Yes, so before you guys tonight, for the public hearing is the proposed 2023 budget for $28,868,313. This was advertised pursuant to law. Proposed in this year's budget are the following: we have two additional full-time police personnel, increasing our sworn personnel from 24 to 26; two additional full-time fire personnel, increasing our full-time sworn personnel from 14 to 16; one additional full-time code enforcement officer, and one additional Public Works staff member. The budget as proposed and advertised is 10% greater than last year with an increase attributed to the general fund for additional personnel pay raises and a $2.9 million construction project. This project is funded by funds from the general obligation bond for the 93rd Avenue project. We will have some work to do with respect to agreement and working with the clerk treasurer on how we're going to be handling some insurance costs and how these are going to be paid moving forward. Daniel Dalton from Center Dalton is here this evening also. He and I met with the clerk. We had a really good meeting with some recommendations for the council on ways to reduce the expenses to the general fund. Some of these changes we've already discussed are moving two of the squad cars that were proposed in the budget to the ARPA fund, changing some projects around from 2022 funded out of the 2022 for 2023, reducing the departmental ranks, increased pay, deferring the hiring of personnel until June 1st of 2022. These modifications will reduce the overall impact on the general fund by $338,948.48. But we still have some work to do on that. And Daniel, if you want to continue on that.
Yes, so going off of what Joe was saying, there'll be some work to do over the next two weeks with council so that we can get the budget down to a reasonable and sustainable Of course, that's going to include budget cuts here and there after we had advertised several weeks ago. One thing I want to make note of is, like St. John and other communities, what they've done in the past is basically set the budget intentionally high with the intention that they will narrow it down to a sustainable level moving forward when we finally get to adoption. I could hold this off till later, but I should mention something about tax rate questions. So we don't anticipate the tax rate to increase in 2023, but the taxpayers could pay more in property taxes if their assessed values have increased. And so when you take the assessed value times the tax rate, the dollars paid will be higher, but it's not because you're intentionally increasing the tax rate, it's because assessed values in the town of St. John have increased so substantially from 22 versus 2023. And so with that, I will turn it back to Joe, or we can take questions.
Did you want to continue on with the sanitary district and water district budgets as well? Or Jerry, what's your?
No, I'd like to finish, you know, or go through this one and take any questions or concerns on this before we start looking at something different. So if you could, Joe, repeat what you said earlier about some of the areas that we were going to cut as far as pay, as far as employment positions. What are your thoughts?
As far as, when you say cuts, what do you?
I don't know. What did you say when you said we were going to look at some ways to cut?
Oh.
You deferring them till?
Yes, one of the staff members that we were looking at doing, or a new position for the full-time for code enforcement, we talked about doing a, deferring that until June 1st.
Okay, so just that one, not all?
Right, that's correct.
Just, I just wanted.
Yeah, so that would, we didn't discuss the others, but it was just the code enforcement, the new position that would be created.
I got a quick question. So I look at some of the percentage increases, I'm just trying to understand how the ARPA money is related to this budget, or is it related to it at all? Is the ARPA money that we have represented within this budget?
That's a good question. So as it stands and it was advertised, the ARPA money is appropriated in the budget. However, we are going to be making a change on that as we are going to be appropriating 1.1 million, and this would be for the West 85th Avenue project and the Fire Department bunker year. That would have to be paid for within this fiscal year. So we would appropriate the 1.1 million this year and then reduce the appropriation accordingly for the budget.
Okay.
And Dan, you wanted, did you want to explain how that would function throughout the budget process in terms of how we would fund those additional projects or money?
Yes, so the ARP fund is a home rule fund, which means it's not going to be reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance. And so what we are planning to do is make an additional appropriation and have that approved by the October 26th meeting so that we can get those two expenditures that Joe just mentioned paid for and expensed before the end of 2022.
And then the balance of that fund will just, so you're doing 1.1 million, you're going to?
Yeah, so that's going, what you currently see in the document you're looking at, that's going to decrease because we're spending that 1.1 million yet this year. And that, so that's going to decrease what we're appropriating in 2023.
Okay.
And that's a what, the 4.2 or approximate 4.2?
4.26, yeah.
4.26, yeah, change.
What project is that for, Joe?
That would be for the West 85th Avenue project.
Where it's the three communities doing it?
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. So that would be for that project and then for the bunker year.
I thought it wasn't that expensive. I thought it was like $600,000 our share.
We've got to make sure that we've appropriated the correct amount. So whatever we get reimbursed from Lake County and from Sherrville will come back to the town. But we want to make sure we're appropriating the correct amount.
Okay, nice conservative way to do it. So that's the high water.
Trying to cover the cost up front so that.
Yeah, I thought it was a lot cheaper.
No, it actually came in substantially higher, about 30% higher, just like.
The change order?
Just like CCMG came in higher, too.
Daniel, is he saying that since St. John is the lead on that project, we have to pay the entire amount and then recoup the money from the JICA from the other?
So I am not myself certain.
From Sherrville and the county.
I'm not myself certain of the details of the specific.
Yeah, when it was set up, we were paying the full amount, and then we're going to be reimbursed from Sherrville.
We're the lead agent, we're the lead agency, and so we're going to pay the entire bill.
Correct. And then collect.
All right.
And it's already approved. Sherrville and the county have both approved it, but they haven't given us the.
Legally speaking, we can take the money we get from the other two places and put it back into ARPA.
Very kind and very generous.
Yeah, very nice.
I will need to double check.
That one, I'm worried about that.
But is that Beth's? But we don't need to handle that.
No. But I'm saying legally speaking, we should check to make sure that you can then take the money from the joint agencies and deposit it back into the ARPA fund. That's something you're going to have to look at.
Well, would you do that?
Well, I mean, do we want to?
Have to.
I don't think you, why don't we make sure that you have to do that? Why lock it up?
I don't know if we necessarily have to put it back into the ARPA fund. I mean, it's a capital project fund, but it's not ARPA funds that are going there.
So it could go back into some other road improvements.
Well, let me double check with the state board of accounts before I give any further advice on that.
Well, because we're a while's off before getting the reimbursement, but still to Beth's point, let's make sure that we're not putting it in the wrong.
That's right. Refresh our memory, when does the ARPA money need to be spent by?
2026.
Needs to be appropriated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2025.
Right, 2025 is the end. You have to all have it coming.
Twenty twenty five, so you have a couple of years.
And we'll have those parameters met this year in terms of appropriation, so.
Okay.
Spending is a whole nother issue. Doesn't need to be spent all at once.
Any other questions or concerns on the general municipal budget?
And we'll be meeting with Beth and Daniel on additional cuts and whatever else we got to do, so we'll be making those recommendations to you.
Nothing else?
Not on the civil.
All right, so then we will open the floor to public comment. Anyone that would like to speak on the civil budget? Calling twice, three times. All right, we will close the floor to public comment. Let's go on to the next one then.
So with respect to the sanitary's district's fiscal year 2023 budget, there's some increases in, you'll notice in the engineering and legal services. There are several projects that are coming up that are going to need some consideration for engineering, perhaps some legal work, including obtaining some right-of-way maybe. These projects are the 93rd Avenue improvements and the Parish Avenue Roundabout projects that are underway with the state of Indiana. These are currently in the design phase with the state. Also, there's some additional consideration for engineering for infiltration and inflow studies to seek ways to eliminate and reduce the INI. You may notice that the gas and electric also costs have escalated. These have been throughout the organization, including, you know, water as well. So sanitary spent about $15,500 this year through August in engineering, about $7,900 in legal for the same period. Currently, there's about $45,000 appropriated in the sanitary district for that, $10,000 for legal, about $10,000 for consulting, and $10,561 is being transferred into accounting. With respect to the last year's budget, some of the things that weren't considered in that budget, obviously, is the covert conflict. You know, obviously, that kind of came out of left field with respect to getting that done, and then the cost escalation on that, too. So obviously, those projects, you know, come up, but right now, we don't have an end dot project that's going to force us to get stuff done, but we do have some work to do on that. There's more underwater, but a lot of this is applicable to them as well.
Joe, can I ask you, did we, what is the, our participation in the parish roundabout?
So we have to relocate our utilities that are in conflict. Everyone's utility, well, Nippsville, there's our in conflict as well, so we're going to have to do some relocation.
I was just curious as to where, you know, why we were being sucked into that.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
And then there's right-of-way considerations, too, for the state. So whether we're going to be in there right-of-way or if we have to obtain right-of-way.
Questions or comments on the sanitary budget? All right, and let's move on.
Since you opened the public comment for just the civil, then we should probably open for each other.
Okay, I will do that. It's a good idea. All right, yeah, I'd like to open the floor to public comment on the sanitary budget. Calling twice, calling three times. All right, we'll close the floor to public comment on the sanitary budget. All right, we'll move on to the water district.
So very similar to the sanitary district's fiscal year 2023 budget, same level increases. We're looking at same kind of projects, same kind of, you know, issues that are, you know, facing both of those utilities. Additionally, there's going to be bond projects that will be underway that obviously is going to impact, you know, the overall cost, but the bond project obviously is not, you know, it's factored into the equation, if you will, within the overall budget. It's not in the water district budget, but the monies are appropriated for that. So, you know, one of the things that we're going to be needing to take a look at is how we're going to get the funds for the 93rd Avenue project. So we're going to hopefully start having those discussions with the water board sooner rather than later. I know that we were successful in getting a $250,000 appropriation from Lake County, which is really appreciated. I know that there's another project that is equally important, that's Acorn, that needs to be taken into consideration. Again, that's probably going to come more out of the utility than the district, but just something that we need to keep in mind.
Well, that's about a million dollars for that, and then I was told that if I got it right, they did a survey for all three water towers. There's $1.7 million in upgrades, improvements, whatever, so that has to be taken into consideration.
Right. So what, I mean, what I'd like to do, because I know there were some water projects that were already kind of factored in when they were doing the bond, is maybe sit down, Wayne, with you when you get some time, and just kind of go through those projects and then have that discussion with the Water Works Board on prioritizing what's number one and what's, you know, what's last, what's not as a high priority.
Well, there's different things, and there's just a lot of money to go out there. And I think the construction costs and everything, you could probably say went up 40%, 30% for sure.
Easy.
Materials and all that, and it's hard to get contractors.
Yeah.
And that Acorn project didn't, doesn't include possibly the street.
Right, right.
That's a lot of money.
It is going to be a lot of money.
In our budget, if last year was like six and a half million, and we're up to 9.5, 9.8, that's a lot of money to cut. You want to be, you want to make enough cuts to have a balanced budget. So we got a lot of cutting to do between now and, what, the end of October?
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, that's.
So Wayne, are you satisfied? We all understand that we're buying a million to 2 million gallons of water from Sherrville a day during the summer. Are you guys in the water board? Are you guys considering a solution to that problem that we currently have?
Well, we're trying, but well eight has been stagnant for four or five years.
So do you have a plan of actually using that water in well eight?
Yeah. You got a line run, it's only 600 feet left to go, to tie into well eight. Well eight needs a wellhouse. Well nine needs a wellhouse. So it takes.
Where are you tying it in?
It, pardon?
Where are you tying it in?
Well, that, now that's going to determine whether or not, how the state wants us to handle the water, how we're going to treat it. Are we going to treat it at eight or nine, or are we going to send it back to the treatment plant, which is, we're within 600 feet of tying in, but now we might have to add on. So if we add on to that, we're going to have to put a cylinder, what they call a hot dog or cylinder, to treat the water. That would be green sand. That green sand, to do that, just to put that in that tank, if you changed out one that's in there now, it's 240 some thousand dollars.
Yeah, is there enough capacity there in that treatment plant for the well eight?
No. You're going to probably have to add on. Most likely, you're going to have to add on.
How long does that take?
It takes, it could take a couple of years, it could take a year and a half. But it's good, this shouldn't have taken as long as it did. Nobody was pushing the project or whatever, it went stagnant, okay? Whether or not, we didn't get the property for the well eight and well nine set up with the lawsuit and stuff, things kind of went south. There's pipe, we got pipe at Public Works to do the 600 feet and a couple hundred feet to tie into where eight is, but now we have to figure out with the state, and we got to get with engineering, whoever, somebody has to push it. I mean, we as councilmen can say, yes, this is what we want to do, but guess what, if...
I just want to be mindful of the money, right, we're, there's such a tremendous loss of money to buy one or two millions of.
Well, that, we have $7.2 million, I think, for that bond. We've used some for the SCADA system, so there should be 7.2 million left, but that's going to be for.
But that's appropriated, right, to other projects.
Well, no, it's not, no.
It was.
It's still not, it's still not appropriated. We've got the projects.
Not appropriated, but it's.
But I think.
That bond was set up.
That's right.
When we did that bond, we had to have the money, we had to show in good faith that we had the money, so we raised the water rates. Then Baker Tilly said, now we're all set to go ahead. So that's what, that's what happened. We've got the money, we just didn't get the train going.
Okay, so just, I would like that bleeding to stop.
Do we have permits, though, for well eight?
Well, that was another, thank you for bringing that up. We had to, eight was done, then we had to wait for item to do nine, and that takes up to three months. So then eight was not grandfathered in. We had to do some other stuff to, for testing. They wanted a clearance. It was 57 feet from the well out to the edge, and they said, no, that's not right. So they got all that corrected. So eight is ready to do a, probably a building, and so is with nine, the wellhouse, but now we got to talk with the item to find out how we're going to treat that water. Are we going to treat it at the treatment plant, or are we going to do it at eight or nine?
Right, so we need a water study.
I think that's something that the director of Public Works, the water operator and the town manager are going to have to sit down and get a game going.
Right, right now, they're working on, what kind of test is that, where they're going to do the flow test?
Oh, I don't know if that's, they drill.
Interference test or something like that, right?
That was at Monex. At Monex, they drilled a Shehe well, drilled a well, a shallow one, and they're going to run that, try and run it at full capacity, but then see what it does to well three or well five. See if it interferes with the aquifer on that.
Yeah.
And if that, if it doesn't, then that's another spot for a well that we can have. And while we're talking about wells and treatment plant, well number seven, the shaft broke on it, so they had to pull that out, so that's another expense. When you're dealing with water and sewer, there's a lot of money.
Right.
And anything can go wrong, you know? It's like having an expensive car, and it goes down, and you got to pay the price.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, just off the top, what is the reason for the big failure at Acorn? Was it lousy material that was originally put in there or what? Do you know? You have a theory?
It could be a lot, it could be a lot of different things. It could be the acid in the ground, acidity could mess that up, it could be.
You mean the clay or something else?
Well, like leaves and all.
Yeah, from the oak leaves.
And then our old water operator, Derwin, said sometimes that he figured if you use the, you grounded the water meter to the, the house of the water meter, the electric might do something to it.
It'd electrocise, yeah.
Yeah, electrocises. It could be that.
No, I was just curious.
It could be human error.
Yeah, how come?
The valve at the end, if I've got it right, I think it was at the end, and there's a creek, they went to dig that up, and when they filled that in, they used concrete. So they had to take out concrete and slabs or whatever chunks. The valve, when they turned it off, if this is the bottom of the valve, when he's turning it, it went all the way through the bottom. It was all rotted out. So probably age deterioration, and there's no guarantee.
It wasn't, if I remember, that was put in in the early 70s.
That I don't know.
Hidden oak, well, I was working with Thompson at the time. I know when they built hidden oaks, it was in the early 70s.
Right, and then you got to keep in mind, Emmy Simpson is doing, they're checking all the valves throughout the town, they got to finish up on that. I think we signed some paperwork for that to keep that going, it was like $15,000 short. So those, there's some valves that have to be replaced per Emmy Simpson that don't work.
I was just curious as to why that whole system, all of it seemed to have come apart. Must be the ground.
I think you just had a couple of breaks there, and that was it. I don't think the whole system went bad over there.
Oh, you don't think so?
No. You had a couple of water breaks. You're going to have water breaks anywhere on your system, it's just something that happened, and they fixed it and.
It's older and it's the old ductile stuff, too.
Yeah, it's ductile, it's got to be replaced. When they were putting in stracks, the, we were sitting in a truck, and it was the brick layers that were on a water main, on a hydrant. We had six water mains. Six water main breaks, yeah. We can move on.
So I have another, one last question on the, or a question on the, I noticed the rainy day fund is extremely robust for both the water department and sanitary district. Is there a reason for the robustness on both, Dan or Joe? And I'm joking, of course, it's zero.
Yeah.
You know, I don't. Is that something that most towns, or is this not needed?
Is there a rainy day fund in the civil?
Well, there was one, but that was spent, I believe. In 2016, we received a special one-time distribution from county, and a percentage had to go to civil, a percentage to sanitary district, and a percentage to water district. That's where the, and you were able to then create rainy day funds with the one-time special distribution. That's what established them.
So at this point, they're just dormant?
That's pretty much what they've done other places, too, this, they were created at one point because we've got a grant on something and.
No, we got a one-time special distribution, tax distribution. I know sanitary and water used it for, recently, when Rick was still here, I don't remember what it was. There was something that they didn't do correctly, and they used some of the sanitary and water one-time distribution to like pay something back. I remember that. I don't remember what the project was.
They had to pay something back to sanitary, wasn't it? Or sanitary paid.
I'd have to look it up. I mean, I could look it up.
Anything else?
It's just an unimportant, it could lay dormant, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I will open the floor to public comment on the water district budget. Any comments? Going twice, three times. All right, we will close the floor to public comment. What we're looking for this evening is a motion to consider each of these ordinances one at a time on first reading only, and then we'll come back and modify those, and then we will work on those in two weeks. So do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1781 on first reading only?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, your support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, that's approved four to one. Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1781B on first reading only?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, your support for that. Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, and then also a motion to consider ordinance 1781C on first reading only, that's the water district budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, your support for that.
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved, considered, approved four to one. Item number four is a presentation. I covered everything there, correct? Let's see. Okay, item number four is a presentation by Tyler Technologies on software.
Are you there, Ray?
I am here, Jason.
All right. This is Ray Kennard, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Close enough.
Along with Lisa, and they're going to give a overview of what an ERP is and how their specific solution works. An ERP is an enterprise-level program where you have full integration across all of your departments. We're going to be looking at the building and planning module in depth, so, and some other stuff as well. Go ahead, Ray.
Okay, thank you, Jason, and thank you to the board for this time to present, I think we have about 30 minutes, so we're going to keep this at a high level, share with you some of the things that our system offers, share with you some information, how some of the agencies that we've worked with in the past, how they've benefited from the system. We'll go through and show you a few highlights of the software so you can see what it looks like, and then hopefully we'll have a little bit of time left for some questions. But as Jason said, today, we are going to talk about our Tyler's enterprise permit. Uh, but as Jason said, today we are gonna talk about our Tyler's Enterprise Permitting and Licensing System. Uh, my, my name is Ray. Uh, it's pronounced Kennard, and that's why I said it was close enough there, Jason. And also Lisa Gerard is on the call. She is, uh, one of our solutions consultants. She's one of our demo experts. Uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to her in just a few moments. Uh, and then my other colleague who's been involved in some of the, uh, discussions with, the initial discussions with Jason is Gary Doobie. And, uh, we're here to just answer any questions that you might have today. Uh, so we'll jump right in. I know this is kind of a busy slide to start with, but I do wanna explain what's included with our enterprise permitting and licenses. And I'll start on the outer edge up here at the top, our community development suite of software. Uh, and this includes modules for managing any type of permit, the entire development, uh, process from end to end, including all your different inspections. Uh, we have modules for code enforcement, uh, for Public Works, our asset management, work order system. Uh, then down here along the bottom, our business management suite, which is for managing any type of license that, uh, the town might issue. So any type of business license, a liquor license, uh, professional licenses, contractor licenses. Uh, we also have a environmental health suite, which is specifically for food inspections, uh, and, and, and other types of health-related inspections. And then we have a fire solution for fire department for safety inspections, uh, which has been extremely popular with, with fire departments when we introduced that a few years ago. Uh, but all of these software suites tie into, uh, some public collaboration tools, the online portals where citizens, contractors, can submit applications. We're gonna talk a little bit more about this. We can tie into, uh, the town's GIS and utilize some information there. You'll see some examples of that here in just a few moments. Uh, we have a, a wide variety of mobile apps, uh, for inspectors, code enforcement officers. And then we also have some really nice tools. There, there's a lot of data that's collected in a system like this over time. Uh, and we have some really nice tools that allow you to see that, that data in relevant ways to help you make better decisions as a town, to see things like key performance metrics, uh, how much time we're spending on certain types of reviews, how long does it take us to process permits, you know, where are those permits being issued across the jurisdiction? So we can see where activity is taking place. So we'll show you some examples of that as well. Uh, so I'm gonna jump right in and talk a little bit about our client base. Uh, this is the, 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 the most widely used permitting system, uh, in the U.S. today. We have over 650 clients that are using this permitting system today. You can see a sampling here. I know at some point in the process, uh, the town is going to ask for references. So we'll, uh, be more than happy to share reference information so you can reach out and talk to, uh, agencies that are similar to the town, uh, in, in size, as well as scope of, of what you're trying to accomplish. Um, in Indiana, we do have several clients, uh, city of Noblesville, uh, city of Bloomington just went live about two weeks ago. They just completed their implementation. We're working on an implementation, uh, for ERP and for permitting at the city of Hammond. Uh, so several clients there already, uh, within the state of Indiana. So I do wanna just highlight just some of the things that, uh, that really make our system stand out. And I think that at the core, it is a sophisticated workflow engine. Uh, so we can take, for example, a building permit process there at the town. Uh, there's a series of steps and actions that the town goes through, uh, on their particular, uh, per, building permit. Uh, that can be 100% replicated within our system. So the steps and actions, all of the regulatory requirements, the fees, the different inspections, the reviews, uh, and, and whether it's one department or multiple departments that are involved, they can all be tied into this single workflow. Uh, and that's what you see over here in the summary screen on this particular permit example. Uh, you can see the recent activity. It's color-coded. We can see things that have been completed, what activities we're currently working on, what's coming up, uh, what fees might be owed, what are some of the, some of the steps that are coming up. Uh, so you're gonna see a, a lot related to workflow and how we bring in different departments into, uh, any particular process, whether it's, uh, a permit or a plan review, et cetera. Uh, another part of our system that really stands out is, uh, the, the reporting capability and the dashboarding. Uh, so we have one dashboard system across multiple Tyler products. So if you have, uh, a need to be in three or four different systems from Tyler, you can go to your dashboard and from that dashboard a- access everything that you need from these multiple systems. You don't have to log into four different systems, uh, to get to where you need. So we're gonna show some examples of how this work, how this works, and how each user there at the town would have their own unique dashboard that has everything that they need to complete their, their work on a daily basis. Uh, I mentioned GIS earlier. Uh, this is a huge component of our system. Uh, this was the first system, when this goes back to 2004 timeframe, it was the first system to be fully integrated with Esri's ArcGIS technology. So we're gonna show you a lot of examples of that. But we can do some really cool things with maps. So everybody likes to see a map. You know, show me where all the permitting activity was in the previous six months. Uh, that's an important part of what our system does. But there's also a lot of data that already exists in GIS, and we can use that data to make, to drive a process and to make it easier to manage a permit process. So when someone tries to pull a permit at a certain location, the system can see what's happening from a GIS perspective. Uh, maybe it's in a floodplain. So there's some additional steps and actions that need to be automatically inserted into that workflow, some additional fees, some additional reviews that need to take place. Uh, all of this is designed to make the system easier to use and to automate some steps, uh, that might be manual today for the town. Uh, and then, of course, we'll talk about the mobile inspection piece. Uh, we have some really nice apps. We're gonna walk through, uh, our mobile inspection app so you can see what it looks like. It's a really easy to use app. Uh, an inspector out in the field can have an iPad or a, or Windows Surface tablet. They can take photographs, do every, manage every aspect of the inspection through that app, and everything gets reported back up into the system. So you'll see that, uh, here in just a few moments. And then, of course, the, the online citizen self-service, uh, this 24 by 7 city hall, if you will. Uh, so the portal is a, a very important component of our system where, uh, your citizens, your contractors can apply for, uh, applications. They can schedule inspections, pay fees, pay invoices online. Uh, so we'll walk through a little bit of this and highlight some of the features, uh, of our online citizen self-service as well. And then I mentioned earlier, uh, the, some of the executive level insights, the, the tools that we have that make it easy to see, uh, what's happening across the jurisdiction. So we have a tool that was introduced a couple of years ago, and it's been very popular with our client base. It's called Executive Level Insights. Uh, it's based on our Socrata technology, which is an open data platform. So we take data, we can draw data out of the system and then present it in ways that are relevant to help make better decisions. So you can see where there's bottlenecks, uh, manage different metrics, uh, see, see where the activity is taking place. And this is designed for board members, the town manager, department heads, individuals that might not, you might not ever log into the actual permitting and licensing system, but you will see that same data through this particular tool. Uh, so we'll show, we'll show a little bit of this here this evening as well. Uh, so I wanna turn it over to my colleague Lisa, and she's gonna go into the software. And then we'll, we'll, uh, highlight some of these things we've just talked about, and then we'll, we'll have a few minutes for some, for any questions here at the end. So Lisa, do you wanna take over?
I will. Thanks, Ray.
Sure.
Um, let me know if you can see my screen.
Yes, looks good.
Looks good.
Excellent. All right. So, um, as Ray said, I'm gonna take you through, just as you can imagine, in 15 minutes or so, a very high-level overview of the applications, uh, that Ray was just talking about. Again, enterprise permitting and licensing is really designed to standardize and streamline your community development processes. So whether that's taking in applications or doing plan review, scheduling and executing inspections, being able to report at the backend, that's really what enterprise permitting and licensing is designed for. So we're gonna start just with a quick overview of that front-end portal, the citizen side of the system. So this would be something that would be accessed from your website. In my environment, it's my fictional city of Tyler here. Um, but what the, uh, the civic access portal allows your citizens and constituents to do is really just self-serve. Anything that they might currently call you about, maybe take up a permit text time on the phone or a building official's time on the phone, asking questions, a lot of that can be answered by themselves here through civic access. Now, there's all sorts of things that we can do here, from search tools to, um, reports of inspections or seeing what's on the calendar. Um, but the easiest way, a lot of times, the easiest way to find information is through that GIS, uh, portal. So as Ray mentioned, this sits on top of your GIS. So if I'm, uh, a resident, for example, and I see some construction going on at a location, I just, you know, maybe it, nosy neighbor syndrome kicks in and I just wanna know what's going on at that particular location. I wonder if they have a permit. Maybe it's my neighbor. Maybe they have a permit for what they're building over there. Um, what this does is it surfaces information to me. So I can select an address, and it can show me any records that you wanna share. So number one off the top, this system is completely configurable. So in terms of what I'm showing you, this is my demo environment, but you would really be able to control what information gets shared. So, for example, I could see that there are some building permit applications out here. Maybe I could see that there was a code enforcement case at this location in the past. Or maybe there's a planning application or an, an existing or ongoing business license process that's happening here. So whatever you wanna share with me as a citizen, now I can find that information myself. And the level of detail that you allow me to see here, again, up to you, right down to, you know, individual details of what I'm available, what's available for me to look up and self-serve. So that's a big part of what we do here through the civic access portal, is allowing people to do searches. Um, I could also, maybe if I'm not using the map, I wanna be a little bit more specific. Um, I can get into very granular search capabilities where I can search for specific, uh, types of applications. So maybe I'm looking for a specific permit or a specific planning application or an inspection, and I have some details. I wanna give you a project name or a, I wanna look for a certain status or a certain type or over a certain date range. And what that allows me to do is find that information, again, without any interaction from anyone there at the town. Right? I can go look it up myself. I saw a sign as I was driving through town, bamboo, something, you've got some project that's going on. Now I can find that information myself, and I can export it out into a report, and you didn't have to, uh, take any time to help me with that. So a big part of what we do is being able to find things, look up things. That includes things like fee estimates, some of those things that take up a lot of your staff time. If we can make it self-serve, that's really gonna help, uh, with your staff and, and all of the other things that they're supposed to be doing. Another good example of that is, of course, letting people apply online. Rather than them coming down, standing at the counter, taking up a permit text time, you know, saying information over the counter or handing them a sheet of paper that they've written on, um, they can do a lot of this through civic access. And we have some nice tools built in that will really guide the applicant to the correct process. Um, so first, very first thing it asks me is, do I need help? Do you know what you're doing, or do you need help getting started with this process? And if I need help, what it can do is it can really hold my hand through the application process. Using, uh, configuration that you guys would define, 'cause you guys know your citizens better than we do, what's gonna make the most sense to them? I'm, I'm here to build something. I wanna start a land use project. I need to apply for a license. And then based on how they select those, it's just gonna guide them through a decision tree. Again, it's like I'm talking to the permit tech on the phone, and they're asking me a bunch of questions. Okay, so you wanna build something. It's, it's residential, right? Okay, are you building something brand new? Are you adding on? And based on how I answer the questions, it's just directing me to the appropriate type of application. Um, and it can provide me with education as I go. So first thing it asks me is, we're gonna need some contractor information. If I say, I don't know what you're talking about, it can direct me to a page on your website that gives me more information. But as I answer these questions, it's just gonna ask me various questions that, again, is tailored to the type of application that I'm trying to get to. So you need to have approved plans. If I say, no, I don't know what you're talking about here either, okay, we're not gonna start with a building permit application. Maybe we're gonna start with a planning application and a plan review first. Uh, but ultimately, we wanna get to the point where your citizen is able to actually apply for the permit itself. And this is largely based on that workflow that Ray was talking about. So this is really mapping out your processes. When I apply for a residential addition, it's gonna walk me through a series of steps. The first step is always location, because when we tie everything to GIS, we can have the software do some of the heavy lifting. So as soon as I put in the location, I say, this is where I wanna apply for that permit, it's running a bunch of validations in the background, and it's evaluating, what zone am I in? Um, can I build onto, you know, based on setbacks? Can I extend my home on this property? Am I within a flood zone? Am I in a protected downtown corridor where maybe there's gonna be some additional historic, uh, district type evaluation and, and plan review that needs to happen? So let the software automate a lot of that for you. It can ask me questions related to what I'm trying to do. So how big is this? What's the value that we're talking about here? What's, give me the description of the work that you're trying to do. And then collect contact information, whether that's, you know, owner, builder, the applicant, a contractor, a developer. We can do all of the validations in the background for license information and registrations. And then, again, based on the type of application, it can ask me specific questions. So this might feed into calculating fees, or it might feed into, um, the plan review process, for example. So you can define the fields that I need to fill in here. They can be dropdown lists like this. They can be text fields. And again, those fields can be used for reporting purposes, but they can also drive other things that are happening in the system. And we also support electronic plan review in this application. So, um, if I need to submit building plans, or because I was in a flood zone, I need to attach that elevation certificate, I can attach those as the applicant electronically. The software's automatically gonna validate those and then route them for plan review electronically. That really streamlines your processes. Uh, this last step here is it's asking for my signature. So I'm Tim Taylor, the contractor. I'm gonna sign this. So we're gonna capture that electronic signature through this process. I can review what I had put in. It's calculating fees. Uh, we can collect those fees either upfront or at some point during the process. And when I submit, it puts in that application, including all of the documents that I want to have go through plan review. Um, and it brings all of that on to your, uh, electronic desk, if you will. But because we went through that initial series of questions, what we're doing is we're ensuring that by the time it shows up on somebody's desk for review, it's a quality application. You guys can start running with it. Nobody has to clean it up or, you know, contact the applicant and ask them a whole bunch of additional questions and maybe realize they applied for the wrong thing and start with something else. So it really streamlines that process for you. So as that application gets submitted, what I wanna do is let's jump into the back office. So what we were just looking at is the citizen side of it. What we're looking at now, this is the town side of it. So this is your staff. This is called the hub, and the hub is like the center of the wheel kinda hub, H-U-B, hub. Um, and the idea with the hub is your users, as they log into the system, the system identifies who they are and then can present them with information that's relevant to their role. And the whole idea with the hub is it breaks down silos. Now, we could be talking about breaking down silos simply between, you know, planning and building and code enforcement and business license, but we could also be talking about the silos between, you know, community development, building and planning, and what's going on on the finance side. So depending on who you are and what your permissions are in the system, the hub is designed to just surface information to you. It's always real-time. So I'm getting notifications. I'm seeing things like key performance indicators, expiring permits and uncollected fees. Maybe I've got some code enforcement investigations ongoing. I've also got some reports here, and again, these are live, real-time reports. I can always take what I'm looking at and I can download them into some other format like Excel or PDF. But this is showing me applications by type and staff overdue reviews and application volumes. How many are still coming in over the counter versus how many are we now getting online? Maybe I'm also responsible for my department's budget. So now I can see my department budget and revised and encumbrance and spend and what's currently available. So again, depending on who you are within the organization, your hub might look different. If I just scroll down here, I'm gonna show you a different example here. Let's say I'm a planner. I don't care about all that other stuff. I'm not responsible for my department's budget. Um, I don't care about code enforcement, but what I do care about are planning applications that are coming in and how long it takes to put them through plan review. So I can see new reviews and which ones are on hold and on schedule. And whoops, this is turning orange. It's color-coded. That shows me that we're getting a little bit, uh, long in the tooth here. They're still pending. I've got a whole bunch backing up pending, and I've got a few that have been approved. And so now I can see things like application by status and the breakdown by type. Maybe I wanna see it on the calendar. Um, or maybe we have some service level agreements that we're trying to meet. And how come it's taking so long for the police department to do plan reviews? Um, and by the way, these are not just snapshots. I can always get into the detail behind. So I can see, oh, well, it turns out Spencer takes 400 days to do plan review. So that would probably throw off the numbers a little bit. Um, but again, these dashboards, these hub pages are designed to surface information to you on a real-time basis. on a real-time basis. Now let's go in and look at some of the approved plans. And what I want to do is show you a little bit of that workflow that Ray was talking about. Because enterprise permitting and licensing is basically a complex workflow engine. So for each type of application that you guys process, you will always be able to see where you are in that process. So I've got a plan unit development. I've got a planning application here. This one's been approved. I can see that graphical representation of where we are in the process. I can also see recent workflow activity. But workflow is really just a series of your steps and your actions that need to be completed in order for this application to be complete. So you're going to be able to configure this, whatever makes the most sense to you. In my case, I go through plan review. We do the staff report. It goes to planning commission. It goes to a council hearing. And then once that all is approved, then we're going to go on to construction. But you're always going to have that snapshot of where we are in the process. In addition, let me pull up another example here. I've got a building permit example that isn't quite so far along. Again, we always start with that summary view and we can see in this case, we're only a little bit complete. We've got a whole bunch of stuff that we're working on. And we can see in that recent workflow activity that we're actually on version seven of the plan review. And revision six was 775 days ago. So helping you identify those bottlenecks and keeping all of the history so that you know, how long did it really take the town to do plan review? How long did the contractor sit on those plans in between revisions, for example? So that's a really good type of information that you can get out of the system. Another example, let's switch over to just one more hub page here I want to show you. Ray mentioned that inspections are part of our application, whether it's building inspections or site inspections or code enforcement. You're going out and doing inspections for code enforcement. They can all feed into our mobile apps. So what we're seeing here on the hub is just if I'm an inspector, I can kind of see what's going on within the system and what's specifically assigned to me, where those are. If I'm a manager, I might want to see my team. This gives you a little bit more workforce management tools where I can see, show me all of my inspections that are happening today. Show them to me on a map. Maybe one of my inspector calls in sick and we need to reschedule or we need to reassign. So again, leveraging GIS, the system can automatically assign and schedule these inspections for you. Let's say my inspector Brittany calls in sick. We're going to take all of her inspections and we're just going to have the system assign them to somebody else. That's looking at workload, is trying to load balance for me, is looking at who's qualified, you know, all of that kind of stuff. As far as the inspector out in the field, I'm just pulling up my mobile device. I happen to have an iPad. But while your inspector is out in the field, this could be in a connected or disconnected state. As they are getting assigned these inspections, they're going to see them on their map. If I'm going to go do this floor framing inspection, I can get directions to it. I can be at the site. I have all of the information about the inspection that I'm doing, including any documents. So the permit form, the approved plans, any other previous inspections we had done. And then I can go through and actually complete that inspection checklist. So item by item, I can go through. I can make comments, indicate whether it passed or failed. I can take photos, attach those here. And when I'm done, I can indicate the status of that. So maybe it's, reinspection is required. It's going to generate a report for me. And what that's going to do is allow me to generate the report. We can sign the report. So if I'm here on site, I'm going to have the contractor sign that. They're going to put in their name. I'm going to sign it as the inspector. And now that becomes part of the record of that inspection. So allowing your inspectors to do this all remotely makes it really easy and seamless for them. Nobody needs to upload or download or anything else that's going on. You know, at the end of the day, this is just going to sync itself back up. If you lose connection while they're out there, no problem, everything just stays local. And then it will resync itself back up once they're back in connection, in connectivity. All right, I got one minute remaining and I just want to wrap this up with a little bit of the reporting that Ray was talking about. We do a lot of analytics, actionable insights, we call it, that takes all of this data that we're collecting. And for your day-to-day users, they're going to be in that hub that I was just on. They're going to have hub pages that's going to surface information to them. But when you get to, you know, council members, representatives and commissioners and department heads that maybe aren't in the system all the time, this is a really easy way for them to see this kind of information, including things like service level agreements. Are we meeting our targets? Being able to find information, take the data that's in the system, turn it into information and then make decisions based on that. So for example, maybe we're not meeting our turnaround time on plan reviews. Well, I wonder why that is. Let's come in and let's look at all of our residential permits, for example, that were applied for over a certain date range. And I can see that broken down and I can see it over time, for example. This is a big one now, right? Everybody worries about how we're recovering after the last two very strange years. So this can show you things over time. I can also do a comparison, compare to a prior time period. And now I can start answering some questions like, oh, we almost increased like tenfold, 10 times as many permit applications were processed this past year as the year before, right? And now I can start narrowing it down. So let's say you've got, you know, your Ward 123. I want to focus on Ward 1. Maybe that's my particular area. And now I can see all of those applications. I can see it as a heat map. That's a little bit easier way to see it than PINs, right? And now I want to compare. Well, what does a tenfold increase look like? Well, that's what it looked like before and this is what it looks like now. That's a really good way to answer, well, how come we aren't meeting our service level agreements on some of these plan reviews or some of these inspections? Having that level of information available at your fingertips and that applies to permitting, planning, inspections, business licenses, you know, is a good way to share that information to the people that need it to make those decisions. All right, Ray, that was all I was going to say. I'm going to turn it back to you and we can address any questions that may have come up.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. And we'll pause here for any questions from the board, from anyone else.
I have a question. I know they were talking about permitting, paying for the permit. How exactly is something like that going to look in terms of a resident paying for a permit through this system, but it's not, we're not talking to the clerk treasurer system?
So the way that payments come in, I can make payments online. So for example, when we did that application and it calculated the fees.
Right.
If you want to take online payments, then I can pay this now. I can do my credit card online. You know, it goes through a payment processor and validates that information. That comes back into enterprise permitting and licensing. And then whatever that process looks like, there's a standard API that can export the payments that you took in today. For example, all of your online payments today and feed that over to your financial system. If we're talking a total Tyler solution, if you're looking at our financials as well as our permitting, then of course, all of that happens automatically in the background. But whatever that process needs to look like for you, that is typically an end-of-the-day, you know, generate an export file that goes and talks to your financials.
How do you get the older data or the back data or the past, like last years and the year before that into the system?
Ray, you want to take that one? The conversion question?
Yeah. Is that all manual entry?
Yeah, so we can, the contact information from a previous system, it would be part of our data conversion services. So almost every implementation we do, there is a data conversion. So we take historical permitting information, historical inspections from previous systems and we can, and that would also include contact information that we can bring over into the new system.
Okay. And then so if we decide 15 years from now, we're going to switch to a different system, is the system, the information that you have, is that going to have to be converted or is that going to be in a usable format?
It would be in a usable format. Our position, Tyler, is the data is always your data. It's, you can have it, request it at any time. It's in a, what we call a SQL database format. So it's always your data.
And then when you're on site doing inspections and things like that and you're pulling up maybe the building permit or an actual, one of the actual documents, are you actually seeing the document or are you seeing the thumbnail of that?
You are seeing a, the document itself.
The real document. Okay. So you need the bandwidth to be able to handle that.
Yes.
The cellular connection would be able to handle that fine.
Okay.
Yes.
And what it typically does is if you, if I were to, I didn't show you when we were in the app, but if I clicked on it, it does the first step of downloading it and it'll store it sort of locally on the device so that if I am going somewhere where I'm going to lose connection, then it's there and then I can open it up. So it's not actually sort of live passing it through the, you know, the air wifi or whatever that is cellular network.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question. So did you say earlier that the town of Noble recently?
Noblesville.
Noblesville. Noblesville recently purchased us.
It was, they've been a customer for several years now. Bloomington just completed an implementation. They went live about two weeks ago. And then Hammond is currently implementing Tyler's, our munis financial application as well as this permitting licensing system that you're seeing here today.
So my question is, so what is, can you answer this, I guess? So for Noblesville or Bloomington, what package of portals did they buy? So is it typical, they'll just buy, let's say, this permitting portal or the police station portal or is this, is your software typically bought as a complete package of portals for the town? What is typical or more popular?
For, well, for us, what we're showing here today is the permitting and licensing system. So each of these agencies have the portal for the citizen access related to permitting and licensing, the submittal of applications related to that, scheduling inspections. We have other software components that would be related, for example, for law enforcement or for some of the other products. But all those portals tie into each other. It just really comes down to each agency and their needs and which Tyler products they're interested in purchasing.
Understood. So are you able to answer that one? So Noblesville, did they just buy one portal? Did they buy several? Do you mind, can you answer that? Is that possible?
They just bought one, they bought the one portal, the citizen access portal that Lisa just showed here a few moments ago.
Okay. Got it. And how about Bloomington?
Bloomington was on a, was already on a Tyler financial system and they had some portals associated with that. And then they purchased this enterprise permitting and licensing solution. They did a major data conversion from a legacy system and then they purchased the same portal that we showed here today.
Okay. And is that, is that, so just for I'm clear, so is that typically, that's the most popular way you guys or the most popular way the consumer buys this or towns buys this from you guys is more, they walk into this, they all buy, they have a need for building and planning or fire department or for their financials and they'll buy a particular portal and then they build upon that possibly. But they generally, a town does not generally come to you and say, hey, we went to all of them. Or is that a fear representation?
There have been some, there have been some circumstances like that where we call it a total Tyler deal where you'll see an agency that is, they're updating applications across the board, across multiple departments and they, they need multiple Tyler solutions to do that. And that's all part of the scoping, some of the initial discussions that we're having with Jason to determine the needs. And then we're making recommendations for what products would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Can anybody else have questions?
What kind of cost is this? Depending on how many portals you go or buy or how does that work?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the question.
What's the minimum price versus the maximum price? Is there like a price range from $30,000 to $150,000? What kind of price range are we looking at? Depending on the portal that you get?
Part of the scoping, it's hard, I hate to use the answer, it depends. There's some scoping. I can tell you that the soft, access to the software for our hosted solution is around $180 a month per user. And it scales up from there.
So maybe more specifically.
So if you have 10 users, you can multiply that out and get an average cost. But that's all something we're working with Jason on to put together some preliminary quotes. And the scoping and some of those various needs that we just talked about, that will determine what, ultimately what the price is.
I got a question. How many years have you guys been in business?
Tyler has been in business for 50-plus years.
50 years. And how long have you been focusing on products like this?
Goes back to the early 90s. This particular product that you're, that we showed today came out in the 2004 timeframe. So it's been around for 18, almost 20 years. So it's a mature product. And like I said, we have over 650 agencies today that we're working with on this particular product.
Do you have representation here in Indiana or the Midwest or is this typically a, or I guess, do you have agents actually within our state or our region?
Yeah.
How do you cover?
Well, I cover the Midwest for this particular product. I'm currently up in the state of Michigan. I'm up in Mackinac at Michigan's planning conference this week, which is, which is why I'm virtual. But yes, I do cover Indiana and several other states there in the Midwest.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for your, for your time and your presentation this evening.
Likewise. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
We move on. Item number five is to consider the contract extension with Republic Services and authorize the town council president to sign.
Joe. So thank you very much. So as you guys are maybe aware, maybe you aren't aware, in 2018, the town entered into an agreement with Republic Services. Within that agreement, there was a provision for the extension of the contract for a four-year term. With that extension was a 3% increase. Given the rate of inflation, I would imagine that the contract proposal from Republic would be higher than that. So if Mayor Mitros would come up to the microphone, this is Jim Mitros. He's the liaison from Republic Services, so.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, actually, Joe kind of saved the day for everybody. We, you know, we, I was here four years ago and the China Sword had just dropped and recycling, the bottom went out of recycling. And fortunately, you guys were good enough to put this 3% increase in. Since that four years, recycling got a little bit better. And now, over the last three months, it has lost, it has dropped another $65. So right now, as we speak, to cover the cost of recycling, you'd be adding another $1.38 to the cost that we're talking about. On top of that, gasoline, diesel gas has gone to about five bucks a gallon. On top of that, we can't get truck parts. On top of that, it's hard to find truck drivers. So all these costs have all gone up. And so we really kind of thought, normally Rosie, Rosie, I think you all know Rosie as Rosie. He's my boss. And normally he looks at all these contracts with a fine-tooth comb. And our bosses were so adamant on recovering these costs that we just started putting numbers together that were much higher. And finally, Joe came back and he said, well, what do I tell the council? I understand all these costs and trying to cover them, but what do I tell the council when there's a clause in here that says you can just raise it 3%? And I went, we, Rosie and I looked at each other and went, oh. This was probably the first time we didn't actually even look at the contract because four years ago, we weren't putting that in contracts because we didn't want to extend out that far. So Joe saying that this was a good thing is a, as, you know, I'm an old mayor. So, you know, being an old mayor, I'm always a little bit on your side too. So this is a kind of a gift horse in the mouth. Joe found it for us, pointed it out to us. And now we're here to say definitely we will, we will always honor all contracts. So, and that has not always happened with us. Not too long ago, we had some trucking firms come in that take the trash from the transfer station to the landfill and they just basically told us, we're canceling your contract because we can't afford to stay in business at that price. So here's your new price and if you don't like it, we'll file bankruptcy. And so we had that, uh, the cost of transportation went through the ceiling. So yes, uh, you guys will be probably the last one to have this opportunity. Uh, this, the price, uh, if you went out to bid right now, the price would be substantially higher, even from our company. So uh, I'm here to congratulate you and uh, uh, say that as a former mayor, I encourage you to uh pass the extension and we look forward to servicing you for the next several years. Thank you. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I will say, without a doubt, 3% sounds like the greatest deal ever.
Especially with inflation at 8.5.
Thank you for you guys being honorable and thank you, Joe. You've saved this, you know, you've saved our town thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. So thanks. Thank you for your hard work.
And all that did was translate. It would have been the taxpayers having to pay the money.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And uh, you know, having been a 12-year mayor, I understand the the heartburn with that. So.
Well, thank you.
So any other questions?
And just to, Dave, you you, or I know you took a look at the contract, the original contract. I just wanted to get you to kind of weigh in on on your thoughts for the extension on that as well.
The the extension was fine and and legal and um, yeah, we talked about that 3% increase and we thought it was a good idea, so.
Instead of the heartburn being on your citizens, the heartburn is on our bosses.
I'd rather have it that way.
Bad place to have it. It's okay.
We appreciate it. Thank them for us.
Appreciate you guys being honorable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help with the skate park, too.
Oh, hey, that was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Any any other questions on this ordinance 1782? I'm sorry, it's not an ordinance, it's a contract with the Republic Services. Sorry.
That you have to sign.
Yeah, any other questions or comments? Then I want to entertain a motion to consider the contract extension with Republic Services and authorize the town council president to sign.
Absolutely, so moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you, counsel.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Um, one last item I have, and that's just to mention that um, we've got an opening on our board of uh, on our board of public safety. Um, we're looking for um experience in the fire side. So we're accepting applications for that and that's for the safety board on the fire, on the fire experience side. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I got one item.
Okay.
We had last month, we had our last meeting, we had uh, Jason presented a proposal for $26,000 on a request proposal or purchase. And now three guys signed it, but we weren't asked to sign it. When did this get signed? The in the back room or what? All of us should have had an opportunity to sign this. And the way it was deferred, and I thought it was deferred to the next meeting, but somehow this got passed. And that's probably the first time I think I've seen anything passed in the uh, in the time that we've been on here, even when I was working for Public Works, that it was always, it had to be passed at a meeting. It's not, doesn't always have to be, but that's the customary procedure.
That's customary, right.
So why wasn't that done this time?
Because we were under a timeframe constraints.
Well, what what if we have timeframe timeframe constraints before, next time? Are we going to keep doing that?
I don't know. Well, if you would bring it to us, Wayne, we would consider it.
Can I take, take IC that?
Yeah.
Please.
If you had something with a water main pipe or something like that, that we needed to buy before we could do the RTP, we would, we would approve something like that.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure it doesn't keep happening for everything.
I understand.